For joining us this evening for our city council meeting, we'll go ahead and get started. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Bates?
Here.
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 Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Always yours.
Why?
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you'd remain standing, the invocation will be offered by Derek Allen, representing Pocatello Christ, Pocatello Church of Christ. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You pray with me? Righteous Father, thank you so much for these civil servants who have come together to discuss and to plan the progress of this city. God, I just ask you to give them wisdom, to give them courage, to give them joy and peace as they go about making the decisions for our city. Lord, just pray that this meeting can be honorable to you, that it can be good for the city. I just pray that you fill everyone here with your peace, with your wisdom, with your grace, with your mercy, with your justice, and with your truth. Lord, thank you so much for these men and women who have come together and dedicated their time and their efforts and their lives to serving the people of Pocatello. Lord, we love you. It's in Jesus's name. We give thanks and pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We will move to the agenda item number three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings. Budget Development Meeting of May 15, 2025, Clarification and Regular Council Meetings of June 5, 2025, and Special Council Meeting of August 7, 2025. B, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claim for the period of August 1 through 15, 2025. C, Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to approve the Treasurer's Report for June 2025 showing cash and investments as of June 30, 2025. D, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Alyssa Rix to serve as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, filling a long-term vacancy. Alyssa's term will begin August 22, 2025, and expire August 22, 2027. E, City Council Decision Vacation of Rightofway for Setner Lane. Council may wish to adopt a decision approving a vacation and abandonment, abandonment, can't say it, abandonment. Close enough, okay. Of the public's, I don't know what's going on, public's interest in right-of-way of approximately 0.5 acres of land located on Setner Lane, now I'm having a hard time, and distributing said vacation land to adjacent owners, Ketchner Homes Incorporated, subject to conditions. F, City Council Decision Annexing Approximately 12.46 Acres of Land to Extend the City of Pocatello City Limits on Trail Creek Road. Council may wish to adopt this decision annexing approximately 12.46 Acres of Land located in the parent parcel, RPR 383-3853028016, generally located on Trail Creek Road. The subject property will be zoned residential low-density RL. G, City Council Decision Final Plat Approval for Ridges High Tenants Division 1. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Ridges at High Tenants Division 1, which subdivides approximately 63.18 Acres of Land generally located north of East Center Street and southeast of Vista Drive, subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through G as presented in Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lyric and a second by Council Member Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda Item Four is Proclamations. We have no proclamations, so we'll jump to Agenda Item Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. September 4, 5:30 PM, Council Clarification Meeting, 6 PM Regular City Council Meeting. September 11, 9 AM City Council Work Session. Other events, August 24, Ross Park Aquatic Center's last day of the season. August 25, 4 to 7 PM, Welcome Back Orange and Black Event for ISU Students at Lookout Point in Historic Downtown. August 29, final day for candidacy for mayor and city council seats four, five, and six is August 29 at 5 PM. Please contact the city clerk for more information. September 1, city offices will be closed for Labor Day. However, garbage, yard waste, and recycle pickups will continue on schedule. Annual maintenance for the Community Rec Center will continue through September 1. The front desk will remain open, but all other areas will be closed for the maintenance. And as a reminder, there's an open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas. It continues.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just so everyone in the public knows, I will not be here September 4th, so.
Okay. September 4th, Council Member Paulson has plans.
A wedding.
A wedding.
Yeah.
They're big plans. He's excused. All right. We'll move to Agenda Item Six, Surplus and Sale of Surplus Fire Apparatus Fire Department. Council may wish to approve the following requests from the Pocatello Fire, subject to legal department review. A, declare a 2,000 Pierce-Aerial Apparatus as surplus property, and if accepted, B, authorize the sale of the apparatus to the Central Fire District and authorize the mayor's signature and all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before we approach this agenda item, could we have our fire department representative come up and explain to us how this is all happening and why we're doing it and where it's going and how we arrived at this decision?
Our Assistant Fire Chief could definitely come up and do that.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. Dean Bullock, Assistant Chief over Public Safety. We are taking acceptance of a tiller truck hopefully next month, September. We ordered it four years ago. That's about how long it takes for the, doesn't take them that long, but that's how long you're in line for a truck. So four years ago, we spoke to mayor about selling the tower truck when we get this one. The tower truck's been in service for 20 years. Usually after 10 years, a frontline truck has to be moved into reserve status per NFPA regulations and codes. The tower truck has now moved beyond 20 years. So we asked for permission to sell the tower truck. We first looked at an auction company who was out of Alabama to sell the truck, sent pictures, and did everything short of signing an agreement. We put out to the, all the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association members in Idaho about the sale of our tower truck. We were approached by Central Fire, who are four cities, Louisville, Manan, Rigby, there's one more, Ryrie. They came down and looked at the truck about a month ago. The day they looked at it, they told us they wanted to buy it. We explained it still needed to be approved by the mayor and city council. We did a little bit of maintenance work on it, had some water leaks and some other small issues. They've been excited for the delivery of the fire truck ever since. Tomorrow, if approved, we'll be taking the truck to Central Fire in Rigby, and we'll actually be giving them five or six hours of training as well. There is a lot to know about that truck, and they will also be able to call us at any time with any other questions that they may have.
Council Member Cheatham?
If I could follow up, will we be without a similar truck then for a month?
Yes. I'm not sure the exact date of the tiller truck, except that we don't have an exact date that the truck will be done. We've been told September. There is a chance Shane Groh or Chief O'Hern have been given that date. I'm unaware of the exact date that we're getting it. The assumption is we have Chubbuck Fire, who we have mutual aid agreements with, who just took a new ladder truck this year. There's an agreement that they would come help if needed. We do still have one ladder truck available, which is our frontline ladder truck. Most fires that we go to, the ladder truck is enough. It would be a large commercial building that may need the use of the tower truck. We have not used the tower truck on a fire in over five years, I am assuming. I don't know that for sure, but it's been quite a while.
So I guess the concern I would have would be we're at the peak of fire season, and we're giving up one of our capabilities. That concerns me a little.
Like Assistant Chief just said, we've got a ladder truck, and Chubbuck just took a new truck in the last, was that six weeks, four or five weeks? And that mutual aid, we will have coverage until we get this other one, for sure.
We do still have six or seven other engines in our department. We have our front lines as well as reserve engines, as well as seven other brush trucks as well.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion.
We have a question down here.
Go on, sorry.
Okay, your answer was question. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the surplus and sale of the surplus fire apparatus from the fire department to the Central Fire District as outlined in Agenda Item Six.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Cheatham and a second by Council President Lyric. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick? Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seven, Use Agreement. Thank you, Chief, thanks. Agenda Item Seven, Use Agreement Azure Williams Ambush FC Parks and Recreation. Council may wish to approve a use agreement with Azure Williams, with Ambush FC to follow, to allow her two soccer teams to practice on the green space at Constitution Park for August 2025 to October 2025, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Seven, as outlined, and to authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Paulson and a second by Council Member Bates. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Amendment to Idaho Community Development Block Grant ICDBG CARES Agreement, Public Parks for Resiliency. Council may wish to approve an amendment to the Idaho Community Development Block Grant CARES Agreement, Public Parks for Resilience, to increase the grant agreement amount to $360,000, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Eight as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It was, we had a motion by Council Member Nichols and a second by Council Member Bates. Aubriana, could you call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Idaho Community Development Block Grant ICDBG Bid Acceptance and Construction Agreements. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the ICDBG Parks for Resilience Project, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. A, accept the lowest responsive, responsible bid from Morco Construction in the amount of $312,608 for the Optimus Park and Ross Park Bathroom Construction, options A and option D, and if accepted, authorize the execution of the construction agreement, notice of award, notice to proceed, and all other pertinent documents subject to, or between the city of Pocatello and Morco Construction in the amount of $312,608. The projects will be funded with State of Idaho Community Development Block Grants Funds.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Nine as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a question. Would you like it to be contingent on the legal department's review?
Oh, yes.
See, I did that for you. The second, okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, we could have just ran rogue with it. We have a motion by Council Member Nichols and a second by Council President Lyric. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Airport Lease Termination Resolution and Lease Agreement Airport. Council may wish to approve the following requests for 3,000 square feet of property at the airport, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. A, approve termination of the lease agreement between the city of Pocatello and RMP LLC dated May 3, 2023, and if approved, B, adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement between the city of Pocatello and Keith Jensen for 3,000 square feet of property upon which Mr. Jensen has purchased an aircraft hangar from RMP LLC. The lease will be for a term of 20 years. Rental rate will be $690 per year and will be increased annually according to the CPI, with a full rate review in 2026 and every five years thereafter.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Ten, A and B, let's see, sorry, looking for any legal department. Oh, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Paulson and a second by Council Member Bates. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, RouteWare Assist Management Agreement Sanitation Department. Council may wish to accept recommendations of staff and approve a service agreement with RouteWare to provide services for sanitation department's asset management system, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the RouteWare Asset Management Agreement for the sanitation department, and approve your signature on all applicable documents subject to final legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Cheatham and a second by Council Member Paulson, and we have a comment.
Can I ask, can I ask a question before we vote on the motion?
Sure.
So I just had a question for Tom. So this amount in the, of $18,126.70, that's our monthly rate?
Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services, that is correct.
How does that compare to our original, you know, before we, the original contract?
Yeah, so we took over the sanitation department in 2019. We had a current rate study at that time, and the way we, the way the department was operating was kind of archaic. So we decided to implement this new technology. So what we've noticed over the first five years of this is our revenues have increased by 13% based upon our rate study projections of the revenues. One of the big things that's really been helpful for us with this program is we've been able to find a lot of efficiencies. For instance, when we took over, they were pulling about 16 roll-off containers a day, those big ones. We're now up to 40 roll-offs a day for an average, and so that's a little over $100,000 a month difference. Our temps, which are the ones you can rent at your house, the three-yard containers, same thing. We started off at about 45 a day, we're doing about 100 a day, and that turns out to be about a $30,000 increase in revenues. So the routing software's helped that a lot, and also the ability for the dispatchers to see where the trucks are, monitor where they are so they can combine loads, put assets where they need to be. One of the big things that we've seen for as far as efficiencies is, just for a frame of reference, today alone, we had 1,300 skips. And so what that means is a residential truck pulls up to a house, it puts on their tablet what they're supposed to pick up a can there. If it's not out, they push skip because they have to go to the next one, and it takes a picture of the front of the house. So just today, we had 1,300 skips. Now, historically, we used to go back on the majority of those skips every day because it was our driver's word against the customer. So just today, if we were to go back to those 1,300 skips, that's $16, that's $21,000 a day. Now granted, we don't go, you know, most people say, I'll wait till next week, but our go-backs is what's been really beneficial to us at save and wear and tear on the vehicles. And then it's given a little more ownership to the property owners to make sure they get their cans out. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
I was just wondering, do you know what the original month, what we were paying per month before this renewal?
Oh, yeah, it was 3%, I think it was $15,000.
Okay.
Sorry, I went through a whole diatribe for nothing. Sorry about that.
Council Member Paulson?
I just want to say I appreciate this technology because I remember last year I talked to you, and I thought I had beef with my garbage man, but turns out it just, my bin was not out on time, so, and there was proof. So I do appreciate this. It saves a lot of money and time, so.
It's really saved us a bunch on dispatching because we can see where the trucks are. It helps our supervisors because it, you know, some of these routes have over 1,000 cans they have to do in a day, just one truck. And so the supervisors can get on and say, it's noon, and they're only at 40%, we better get a helper out. So it's helped on getting overtime or eliminating overtime and stuff like that.
One other question?
Council Member Bates?
Thank you. Are there any add-on services that were included in this renewal compared to before?
Yes, so what we are adding on this time, RouteWare offers a mobile app. It's called Recollect. Once we get that up and going, we'll put that out to the public. This app's a pretty amazing thing. It does alerts, so people can sign up, and it'll remind them to put their cans out on their days. It reminds them when they're, we do a bi-weekly, right? So one week your carts recycles out, the next week you're not. It sends reminders for that. We can broadcast a lot of educational material. That's one thing that we historically haven't done a very good job about is educating the public on what's recyclable, what isn't, what you can put in what van and not. And so now with our recycling center, what we're seeing is it's becoming more and more critical that we get our education program in order because the cleaner we can get that material, the more commodity we can get back. So it does a plethora of things. We're really excited about it. Our customers have been wanting a digital platform. I mean, it's a digital age. Instead of calling in, they can, they can now put in a request for a container over the app, so we're pretty excited about it.
Sounds good. Thank you. So we have a motion by Council Member Cheatham and a second by Council Member Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Fiscal Year 2026 Departmental Fee Resolution. Council may wish to adopt a resolution with exhibits A through Y setting fees.
A through X.
I'm sorry, A through X, setting fees for fiscal year 2026, October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026. The exhibits are as listed, A through X.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2026 Departmental Fee Resolution, Items A through X, as outlined in Agenda Item Number 12.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lyric and a second by Council Member Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Resolution Fiscal Year 2026 Foregone Levy. Council may wish to adopt a resolution certifying the levy for, of forgone taxes in the amount of $19,728 for use in fiscal year 2026 in accordance with Idaho Code 63-802.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the resolution certifying the levy, the fiscal year 2026 foregone levy as outlined in Agenda Item Number 13.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lyric and a second by Council Member Nichols. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, An Ordnance, we have four of these, so we'll do one at a time. Agenda Item 14A, An Ordnance Repealing City Code 5.30, City or Children Group Treatment Centers.
Mr. Mayor?
Council, how do you wish to have the ordinance read?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to that Agenda Item 14, Section A, would be read only by title placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Mangum and a second by Council Member Paulson, I think. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, repealing Chapter 5.30, Children Group Treatment Centers of the Revised and Compiled Ordinances of the City of Pocatello, 1983, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14B, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 15.02.010 Code Adoption to Update the Governing Document of the Electrical Code. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item 14B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. We have a motion by Council Member Cheatham and a second by Council Member Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, revising Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Pocatello Municipal Code, more particularly by revising Section 15.02.010 Code Adoption, and providing that all other sections of Chapter 15 not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item fourteen C, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17.04 Overlay Areas to Clarify and Improve the Function of the Title. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance, Agenda Item Fourteen C, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by councilmember Paulson and a second by councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An Ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a Municipal Corporation of Idaho, Amending Chapter 17.04 Overlay Areas of the Revised and Compiled Ordinances of the City of Pocatello, 1983, more particularly by amending Chapter 17.04.170 Sensitive Lands Standards, to provide clarity and improve the function of the title, and Providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item fourteen D, An Ordinance Approving the Fiscal Year 2026 Appropriations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number Fourteen D, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the, I'm sorry, and that the whole ordinance be submitted for publication.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by council president Lyric and a second by councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson? Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor.
An Ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a Municipal Corporation of Idaho, Appropriating $161,827,149 for the 2026 fiscal year to defray all necessary expenses and liabilities of the city, providing for the objects and purposes for which such appropriations are made, and the amount appropriated for each object or purpose, levying ad valorem taxes in the amount of $35,865,971 for the fiscal year beginning the first day of October 2025 and ending the 30th day of September 2026, upon all of the taxable property within the city of Pocatello, and to provide revenue to pay current general, street, liability insurance, recreation, cemetery, airport, public library, capital improvements, expenses, and to pay interest and principal on general obligation bonds of the city of Pocatello, providing that a certified copy of this ordinance shall be filed with the county commissioners of Bennett County, Idaho, Power County, Idaho, and with the Secretary of State of the State of Idaho, providing for the, this ordinance to take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Bates?
No.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes. Paulson? Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Could I just make a brief comment about our budget? I just would like to thank our
Sure.
staff. We go through a very lengthy, rigorous, thorough process to develop this budget, and our staff have worked really hard, and our council, my fellow council members, the mayor, and I think we've put together a very strong, responsible, balanced budget that I feel really good about. So, I want to thank everybody for that, that work, and I think we've got a good budget.
Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, we'll move to Agenda Item Fifteen, Items from the Audience. This time it's been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought